Where's Terry going?
Welcome to the Board of Education's October 26, 2022 Quarterly Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Henderson.
Please stand. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that our November work session is scheduled for Monday, November 7th, with the regular session to follow on Wednesday, November 9th. Both meetings will begin at 5:00 PM in this boardroom. I also want to remind everyone that starting in January, our regular session meetings will move from the traditional Wednesday night to Thursday night following our work session. Board members, as you know, several of us will be attending the Tennessee School Board Association Leadership Conference and Annual Convention, November 10th through the 13th in Nashville. If there are sessions you would like to register for and have not done so already, please let Terry know as soon as possible. Also, just want to announce that Reverend Butler will not, most likely not make it for the entire meeting tonight. So if he has, if he has to leave, it's because of a prior commitment, just to make everyone aware of that. And finally, before we move on to the agenda, I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that this is at the board's meeting, and this is actually the only time we, as a board, have to discuss what comes before us as an elected body. So I would ask that everyone treat each other with courtesy and respect at all times, and that everyone refrain from behavior that disrupts the board's meetings. And our meetings are conducted in public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, but they are for the purpose of conducting our business for the Knox County Schools District. So please, if there's applause, booing, groaning, or, you know, if you feel the need to discuss something with someone sitting beside you, I would just ask you to be respectful of that and step out of the room. And, you know, we certainly don't want to ask people to leave, but we do have business that we have to conduct as a board, so I would ask everyone to be respectful of that. And so with that being said, are there any requested changes to this meeting agenda? So we have a motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Rice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I have some brief updates since our last meeting. I'd like to begin by congratulating Coach Duncan, former athletic director and football coach at South Oil High School, who was recognized at Thursday night's game against Carter. Coach Duncan invested countless hours in the lives of our students, and I was grateful to be part of the ceremony and the naming of the football field in his honor, and best wishes to your coach, to your, to you in your retire, best wishes to you and your retirement coach. I know Ms. Christie was there as well, and we were able to be part of that, and that was great. He's a, he's a fine guy who's done lots of things at multiple schools in his tenure in Knox County, and it has always been great for kids, so that was a special night for sure. I would also like to point out that October is National Principals Month, a good opportunity to reflect on the amazing work done by our principals and our assistant principals in the district. So if you get a moment this week, please be sure to send your administrators an email or a note to let them know how much we appreciate their work, and they do. And they're, they're, they do so many things to fill in gaps even though we don't know every day that they do, and do a great job taking care of their, of their, of our teachers and also of their students. And finally, I want to remind everyone that a special event is happening on November 1st at Bearden High School. The documentary, Hiding in Plain Sight, focuses on the youth mental health crisis, and East Tennessee PBS will host a partial viewing of that documentary at 6:00 PM. And this is a very important topic to us, as we know lots of families and lots of students are, are struggling with mental health issues. So we think this would be a great chance to be able to go. Dr. Stephen Loy, who is an expert on mental health and substance abuse, will be there afterwards to be part of that as well. So it's an event that definitely want to circle on your calendars. With that, Madam Chair, concludes my report.
Thank you. So next up, we have our Charter School Authorizer Training. So is this you again, Dr. Rice, or Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Thompson to set that up. Thank you.
As Executive Director of Academic Support, I now oversee all things charter schools in Knox County. And each year, as we prepare for the upcoming application process, we're required by the state to provide charter school training for the Board of Education, as well as all staff members whose jobs support our charter schools in the event that we have new applications for charter schools. Tonight, we are fortunate to have Ms. Elizabeth Five Ash with us from the Tennessee Charter Center to conduct this training. Ms. Five Ash is a former TDOE employee, serving several roles, most recently as the Assistant Commissioner for Policy and Legislative Affairs. We appreciate her traveling all the way from Nashville today to conduct this training for the board and for our staff. She's going to spend about 20 minutes going through her PowerPoint, and then there will be time at the end to answer any questions that you may have. We'll also be glad to share this presentation with you if you would request that. So at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Five Ash to come forward and share this with you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Really appreciate your time. Hopefully, this is informative. Please feel free to, to stop me as I'm going through the presentation if you have questions. Also, save time for, for questions at the end. So just quickly, starting with what is a charter school? It's definitely a buzzword in education, but a lot of times, folks don't really even understand what a charter school is. So essentially, a charter school, it is a public school, and it can be authorized by either the local school board or in, through the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few, few minutes. So charter schools operate semi-independently according to the terms of a 10-year performance contract called the charter. They are, charter schools are free and open to all students. They can't establish enrollment criteria, can't charge admission or tuition, and this goes for, for all students. So can't deny enrollment to students based on disability status, based on their English learner status, their economically disadvantaged status. So just like a traditional public school has to enroll students that, no matter what, you know, subgroup they may fall into, same goes for, for charter schools. Charter schools are also held to the same testing and accountability requirements as all district schools. So they take the TCAP, the T and Ready. They will receive an A through F letter grade once that rolls out in Tennessee. And so every accountability metric is applicable to them as well. And then all charter schools, again, commit to meet or exceed specific goals for academic performance. And if they don't, they're held to greater accountability in the fact that the, the school board can actually close, revoke the charter and close a school if they're not meeting the terms of their charter agreement. So quickly, I want to touch on the charter school funding under TESA. This is a question that we get asked a lot, is how charter school funding works. And it is, it will be different under TESA than how it was under, under the BEP. So charter schools will receive TESA funding based on the actual students that they're serving within the current school year. So just like the, the district will report students and their ULN, their unique learning needs under TESA, charter schools will report that as well. Charter schools will receive additional direct funding allocation, which is fully state-funded. That's not subject to the local match requirement. This is to replace the Charter School Facilities Funding Grant that is outside of the funding formula. This folds this into the formula. And then one really important point is that when the district reports its student data to the state, charter school students are included in that. So making sure that the district and the charter schools have a really solid data reporting system, making sure that the, the district fully understands what the, the charter school is reporting is going to be very important because it could impact the district's funding if it's not done properly. So we want to make sure that if there's any help that the district or charter school needs in terms of making sure that reporting is accurate, we are more than happy to, to try to help facilitate that because I know that is sometimes a, a big task, but again, so important moving forward under TESA. And then TESA also included a provision around the federal funding. So the, the current state law is silent on how federal funds are distributed to charter schools. But under TESA, it requires that the LEA must disperse funding, federal funds to charter school either through grants based on the, the number of students they're serving, so that any of their, the proportionate share of the grant based on the students, or through a joint shared services agreement. So if there are services that the district is providing using any title dollars that the charter school students are eligible to participate in, now have to put that in a written formal agreement, just to make sure that whatever path that the district chooses, it, it just needs to be articulated and in writing. And the Department of Education is supposed to be releasing guidance on what that will look like. It hasn't come out yet, but we're definitely, will be on the lookout for that. Any questions about the TESA funding? I think one other thing I want to, to mention here is that under TESA, and similar to the BEP, when students move in and out of charter schools, so if a student enrolls in a charter school, the charter school will start generating the funding for that student upon their enrollment. But if they unenroll and move back to a, a traditional Knox County school, the funding will start being generated for, for Knox County at that point in time. You know, there are several counts for student counts throughout the year that are weighted equally under TESA. Under BEP, there was different weights, but they're, they're now weighted equally. And so then they will be included in those counts going forward. And that's one thing that, that we have heard around how that works when students move. It's very similar to the same way if a student moves to or out of your district, to another district. It's, it's very similar process. Then quickly, walking through, through the application process. It's a very lengthy process and is, you know, a lot of, of work for the applicant and for, for the district and the district review team. But they, applications, they start, always start at the local level where an applicant will submit the application to the local Board of Education, and that's through the, the charter school sponsor. And so the sponsor is essentially the proposed governing body. And the sponsor has to be a nonprofit entity, so they cannot be for-profit, and they have to have 501(c)(3) status. They cannot be a non-public school or a post-secondary institution that is not regionally accredited. And they cannot promote the agenda of any religious denomination or be religiously affiliated with any religious entity. So again, can't, can't be a for-profit entity. I think that is something unique in Tennessee. A lot of states do allow for-profit charter school operators. In Tennessee, they do have to be nonprofit. And then the Tennessee Department of Education develops and releases the charter school application and the accompanying scoring rubric. Districts can ask for additional information, not included in the application, but that has to be submitted to the department and then posted on the department's website. So you can't ask for additional information after the application process starts. It has to be before the process starts. And then, prior to the, so all applications must be submitted by February 1st. That date moves depending on if it's, to make sure that it falls on, on a weekday. And then the letter of intent must be submitted 60 days prior to February 1st. Again, or whatever that date may be. I think this year, it's sometime in early December, December 4th or 5th. I'm, I'm sorry that I can't remember the exact date, but it is whatever the 60 days is based on the, the calendar day. And then, once you, the, the board receives the, the application, they must either approve or deny the application within 90 days. So if the local board fails to either approve or deny the application, the application is automatically approved regardless of the contents of the application. So it's very important that the board, you know, takes, takes action. I've never seen a board not vote on an application, but there, there are consequences if the board does not act. And so if, after that, that first 90 days, the local board denies an application, the charter sponsor does have 30 days to submit an amended application back to the school board. And so once that amended application is submitted, the school board has another 60 days to either approve or deny the amended application. And similar to the first submission cycle, if the board does not either approve or deny, it is automatically, is deemed automatically approved. And then if the school board denies the amended application, the sponsor then may appeal to the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission. And so the, the Charter School Commission is an independent body that's set up in Tennessee to be an appellate authorizer. They have appointed commission members and an executive director. They're structured similar to, to a school board. And once they review it, they can either uphold the denial of the school board, or they may overturn the denial and deem the application approved. So if the, if the commission deems an application approved, the school board, the local school board and the charter school may still mutually agree that the local school board, that the school will remain part of the district. If this agreement is not met, then the charter school becomes part of the commission LEA. So there, even if the, like I said, the school board denies the application on both submissions, it still can become part of the Knox County school system, or it can become separate and be part of this, this commission district. And, you know, there are certainly different things to consider when making that decision. So if a charter school stays in the Knox County school system, the Knox County school system has, you know, the, the oversight responsibilities for that school. The school board will be able to collect the authorizer fee from, from that school, which is payment for the, the work that is done by the district to, to help accommodate the charter school. So the, the work that, that Julie and Kathy so diligently do for, for you all. And then the other thing is, is the accountability will remain with Knox County schools. So the accountability results of the charter school will be part of the district results. If the school is under the commission, it's essentially like being in a different district. It is being in a different district. There is still some coordination that has to happen with the, the local school board and the, the charter commission just to ensure students are being served. Especially if they stay in the, the school district, you know, these are still Knox County school students. And so they're still the responsibility of, of the district. And once they, they move over, you, again, some, some coordination, but it's, they're really part of a different district at that point in time. So, you know, I think for, for most communities, it's really great if it makes sense for the school to remain part of the district. It just ensures better collaboration, better coordination. Again, these are students that everyone cares about and wants to ensure are served very well. So it's always to the benefit when the, the, the district and the school can, can work collaboratively. Okay, so the application review. This is, this is the hard work, and this is work that thankfully I, I don't have to do because this is very, very important and, but difficult work. So when the application process begins with assembling a review team, so you, when you're thinking about putting a review team together, you want it to be a diverse set of individuals with various backgrounds and expertise, making sure that you have someone that, you know, is really strong in academics, someone really strong in financial budgets, special education, all of the things that you know go into ensuring that a school is going to serve kids well, think about those types of backgrounds for the review team. Again, the review team, it's very important that the review team and you as a school board, when reviewing the application, are really following the scoring rubric and the things that are in statute for reasons for approval or denial. There have been instances where school boards, you know, this is a very, sometimes very passionate issue, and reasons for denial have not been aligned with the scoring rubric or with the reasons outlined in statute, and the decisions of the school board have been overturned because they haven't aligned with those reasons for denial. So very important that you all are familiar with that and are making really strong decisions based on the scoring rubric. And that you all are taking the, these are the sort of main things that we think really are the most important components that you're looking at in an application that articulates a really strong mission and vision that's aligned with all of the components of the application. So ensuring that there is a cohesive plan throughout the application of, you know, if they say their mission is to serve, you know, a high percentage of low-income students, but then in a separate section, they provide a very low percentage of economically disadvantaged students that they're anticipating, well, that's a disconnect. And so thinking that, looking at the components throughout the entire application. The application should really detail how the school plans to improve student achievement. It should provide strong evidence of community support and need, and that really should be happening, you know, at least potentially even a year before they submit an application is getting to know families, members of the community, the school board, getting really familiar with the community that they're planning to serve. That community engagement really needs to be deep and thoughtful and not something that's done, you know, quickly at the last minute. So we always encourage schools to try to, potential schools to try to build that community support very early. The application should present a clear and realistic picture of how the school expects to operate. So again, that includes that their budget makes sense, that it, that they are thinking about all of the things that it takes to run a school and that that is clearly detailed. And then that they demonstrate capacity to successfully implement the proposed academic and operational goals. So it's, you know, it's easy, or not easy, but easier to set a goal or to say, we're going to do this, but it's, you've got to, the applications really need to demonstrate that they know how to execute that. And so part of good authorizing is also denying weak applications, applications that your review team and you as a board don't feel will serve students well. It is absolutely, you know, very imperative that those applications are denied. And so what does ongoing quality authorizing look like? The State Board of Education is responsible for evaluating all charter school authorizers in the state. So school boards and the charter school commission to ensure that they are upholding their end of the charter school authorizing bargain. And it's meant to be an informative and helpful process to ensure, again, collaboration between the district and the charter schools, which ultimately leads to, you know, what's best for kids. And so that's really where their focus is. And these are some of the principles from the National Association of Charter School Authorizing that, that sort of set a foundation of what ongoing quality authorizing looks like. And so the first is the commitment to a really strong application process. So again, the, it's a comprehensive process that includes clear application guidance and questions from you all. It's fair, it's transparent, and it's very rigorous. And that only charters that demonstrate that capacity to serve kids well are approved. And again, it's very important that weak applications do not move forward. The second is oversight and evaluation. Again, so once the school is approved, you all enter into this charter contract, and so you all are then evaluating performance, you're monitoring compliance, you're ensuring that the legally entitled autonomy remains, but that you are still protecting student rights, that you're still informing the schools of their performance and potential intervention, revocation, or renewal decisions that are coming up. And then that you provide annual public information reports on the school's performance. So again, it's very important that you all are still engaged in the performance of the school. And then the revocation and renewal decision-making. It's very, very difficult to close a school. Everyone is keenly aware of that. But part of the contract, the charter contract, is that in return for the autonomy, there is higher standards of accountability. So again, a quality authorizer designs and implements transparent and rigorous process that looks at the comprehensive academic, financial, and operational performance of the school to make decisions around renewal and charter revocations. And so again, if a school is not meeting the terms of their charter contract, it really is important that revocation decisions are made if it gets to that point. Again, hopefully, it does not get to that point, but it's a very important component of the process. And so that was, again, a very quick slideshow of, I know, a lot of really sort of dense information, so I'm happy to take any questions that anyone may have.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so sorry, I didn't quite catch your name.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth Faibash.
Okay, Elizabeth, I've got just a few quick questions. So on the renewal or the possibly revocation, is there a standard timeframe in which that should be done? It's a 10-year charter, so does that happen at the beginning of the ninth year, or when does that, when does that occur?
That's a great question. So there is a five-year interim review that is required under statute. And as early as the eighth year is when conversations can begin with the school around what it's looking like for their renewal prospects. And then in the ninth year, the, it is best practice for the authorizer to make that decision in the ninth year so that they then have the year for transition students. There is a transition process that does have to take place. It's outlined in state law. And it is, again, it's sort of a joint effort between the district and the school on what closure looks like, ensuring that kids are, you know, assigned to new schools, all of that sort of stuff. So the ninth year is when the decisions really should be made.
Okay, thank you. And then on the, with the federal funds and the distribution, there's several different options. Is it up to the district to decide that approach? Is it kind of top-down, like we dictate how that will happen?
So the statute does not clarify. We're, again, the Department of Education should be releasing guidance on that. If I had to guess, I would assume it would be between some sort of mutual agreement between the school and the district, but I don't know that for sure. And the language in the statute doesn't specify, like, who is the decision-maker there? But again, hopefully, as soon as that guidance comes out, that will be something that's clarified.
Is it solely the governor's responsibility to appoint commissioners to the Tennessee Public School Commission?
To the commission, yes, right now, yes.
Okay. And then, sorry, I'm on a rapid fire here. Is the intent that the review team of the application will or will not include school board members?
I think that's up to the...
It's not dictated?
It's not dictated, no. And I think some school board members have participated in review teams in the past.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a question for Julie Thompson, but if anybody else has a question for Elizabeth, thank you.
So are there any other questions for Ms. Faibash? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, outside of Knox Prep, I think most of us have heard of Knox Prep's intention of filing an application, do we anticipate any other applications this year for charters?
I have had one, I have had one group to reach out to me. We have a meeting scheduled next week.
That's not Knox Prep, somebody other than, okay, so potentially two?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see that we approved our charter review committee in February, and we, do we need to update that since we have some folks that are, that are changed? So will we do that in November?
We probably, thank you, Ms. Warren, Ms. Christie. We could do that in November. We may need till December. I don't know if Ms. Thompson has a thought on that.
Well, we're in the process of identifying those people. Thank you for asking that. We are in the process of identifying people to serve, and I plan to bring that to the December meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So moving on to our next agenda item, we have the discussion on our new Northwest Sector Elementary School Zone. Dr. Reiswick, would you like to lead that off?
Thank you, Ms. Christie. We are actually, I'm actually going to turn that over to Dr. Adams and his team to kind of walk through our proposal. And then I think, I think we captured what the board asked us to do at the last meeting on some of the additional questions and rationale, and then potential other alternatives to some things. So I'll turn that over to Dr. Adams, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Executive Board. We appreciate you giving us the opportunity to share some additional information pertaining to the new Northwest Sector Elementary School. Tonight, I will have Mr. Dillingham, who is my Director of Transportation, share some information. Also, we have Dr. Schafnocker, who will be the new principal at the new Northwest Elementary School. And we have Ms. Jacobin, who is now currently the principal of Hardin Valley Elementary School. So we appreciate you all being here tonight, sharing some additional information as well. Just a quick and a brief overview on my part, how we got here. And our objective was to, number one, relieve overcrowding in the current schools, and those schools, of course, are Ball Camp Elementary, Karnes Elementary, and Hardin Valley Elementary. We also wanted to be very intentional on looking at providing space for future growth. And that's not only in the new Northwest Sector Elementary School, but also to address those concerns for future growth in the three existing elementary schools. This is a quick breakdown of where we were as far as capacity. Last year's enrollment projections, and as you can see through the enrollment projections and where we are as of September 2022, those projections were pretty accurate. Some schools, such as Karnes Elementary, we were, we were pretty spot-on, and others, it was, the numbers were a little higher, but as you can see, we're very close as far as those projections. So some zoning considerations. Of course, we always keep our two objectives to the forefront of every decision that we make. And I like this analogy that Mr. Dillingham shares with me, and it puts things in perspective. When you think about a ripple in a pond from the, where that ripple starts and it goes out, that's what we consider as far as an elementary school. We look at those areas from the center, and then we move outwards. So proximity was on that list. We also looked at the geography around the area. We looked at roadways and infrastructures. And once again, Mr. Dillingham will get in more depth, and he can answer some questions that you all may have as far as those roadways. Routes of travel, I know that has been a concern, especially Pellicippi. Mr. Dillingham tonight can show you all on a map exactly where those routes of travel are. And we wanted to preserve the PRZ. I think that is very important that we look at that and we establish those PRZ zones. And of course, the development of a cohesive zone, we want it to make sense, right? We wanted to make sure it's a cohesive zone. And population concentrations. We will not identify those areas for the protection of our students. We don't want to identify where students are by dots. We could show you that, dots on a map. We will provide that information for our board if you all want to see exactly the locations of students. But what we can do tonight is Mr. Dillingham can show you concentrated areas, so you have an understanding where students are. Before I pass this on to Mr. Dillingham, I would like to respectfully ask that you please hold your questions to the end of our presentation, and we will certainly be here to the end of the presentation to answer any questions you may have. This is the proposed zone, and this is actually a zoomed-in zone with more detail. I will pass it off to Mr. Dillingham at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. All right, let me wrestle with some technology real quick. Okay. Okay, so this, as Dr. Adams just alluded to, is a detail of our zone map. So kind of what I wanted to start out with is how we built the school zone, and some of the considerations we went through, what our thought processes were, how we ended up with this yellow area on this map. So the, I guess, there's not a, we look at lots of things, and there is not a, I don't think of them as a hierarchy. It is sort of a, there are a number of factors that have to be taken into account whenever you're making a decision of this magnitude. So there is not like one reason we do this, there are many reasons that we do this. There is not one thing that we take into account, there are many things that we take into account. So going back to the list on the previous slide that Dr. Adams read, proximity. So our little red star right here, that's our school site. So that was where we began with everything. And we started essentially working outward from there. The logic being that people that are closer to the new school should more likely, or more logically, go to that school. Obviously, once you start getting further and further away, that breaks down a little bit, but it is one of the things that we took into account. Second, geography and topography of the area. I mean, y'all can see the river, Beaver Creek comes through here. There is a ridgeline that Beaver Ridge actually comes all the way through here and comes down south of Hardin Valley Road. So that is, as anybody who's lived in East Tennessee for any length of time knows, we got a whole lot of ridges, we have a whole lot of valleys. So Hardin Valley is no exception to that rule. It does not, you know, we're not, I'm not taking buses off-road. Like, the fact that there's a ridge there doesn't in and of itself mean anything, but what it does express itself as where the roads are. And so often, you know, roads, it is easier to build in a valley than it is on the side of a hill, so you'll get, that's why Hardin Valley is located where it is, et cetera, et cetera. So it plays in in overt and sort of more covert ways. Additionally, the roadways, infrastructure, and routes of travel. So obviously, Pellicippi Parkway, Oak Ridge Highway, Hardin Valley Road. Let me make sure, yeah. These are, they all present barriers, but also arteries. So we're not going to use Pellicippi, I've said that over and over, we're not going to use that to get kids to and from. We are going to use lots of other roads to get kids to and from them. That is a thing that we take into account. The hat that I wear most of the time is school buses, and so that is something that is in forefront of my mind when we're looking at things like this. What is the infrastructure? What can support? How can we get from here to there? That's actually a question that we ask lots of places. If I have a house, if I live right here, and I'm going to go to the new school, how do I get from here to there? If I'm going to put in a bus stop to serve this house right there, how do I get from here to there? What does that time look like? What does the traffic volumes look like? What do we expect to see? Like, what are we going to, I mean, we try to, it's easy to talk about bus routes in particular in abstractions, but every single one of these is a vehicle with, you know, our most precious cargo on it. So what does that look like for them? What does the beginning of their day look like? What does the end of their day look like? We also, Dr. Adams mentioned preserving the PRZ of existing schools. That mainly came into play on the west side of the zone. As y'all can see, we're, this is Karnes Elementary, this is Ball Camp Elementary. We, some of the zone lines encroach pretty close over here, particularly in Ball Camp. So that is a, you know, that has just been a best practice of Knox County schools throughout rezonings for the last, as long as I've worked here. The PRZ is held sacrosanct. So those things required us to do a little bit of adjusting in these areas to make sure that we were, you know, accomplishing the goals we needed to accomplish while not infringing more than we needed to on those zones. Development of a cohesive zone... Development of a cohesive zone, one thing we try to stay away from, if at all possible, is, I've always heard it termed as finger annexation, um, so, you know, you take a little strip right here, or a little strip up there, and it's just, it is out on an island all by itself, we try to stay away from stuff like that, so you're taking areas rather than just, um, discrete sections, you can't always do that, just because of some of the other factors that I've listed here today, but as a guiding principle, that's what we try to do, um, and the other thing we look at is population concentrations, um, so, I have a map that has dots on it for my personal reference, so just speaking in general terms, there are a lot of people that live right here, there are a lot of people that live right here, there are a lot of people that live right here, down here, in this corridor here, and over close to Karnes, so, we look at those things because, I mean, the, the driver of this entire process is the fact that there are too many kids in Hardin Valley Elementary School, if we designed a zone that does not pull a sufficient number of students out of Hardin Valley, out of Karnes, out of Ball Camp, then I've not designed a very good zone, um, and so there is a, again, there is not one thing that pushes this process more than others, there are lots of things that we take into account, and there are, oftentimes, these things are inversely proportional, one, one gives and the other takes, and so we have to try to weigh all of these factors and come up with, you know, a balanced approach, so, the, the population were, was, um, absolutely was a thing that we looked at, where those people are, where those people are now, where they might be in the future, where we expect kids to come from. One of the things that was mentioned, um, in, uh, the meeting last month, was specifically about the Hardin Valley Road corridor, and why we stayed mostly north of it and not as much south of it, um, to a large extent, the development of this, on the south end of Hardin Valley Road is commercial, there's a, there's an apartment complex right here, uh, there's 22 kids that, that are, live in that apartment complex right now, but that is, that is the exception right now as opposed to the rule. Additionally, the, the extension of Beaver Ridge that I mentioned earlier comes through right here, parallels Hardin Valley Road, so, the properties that they have there, like, I looked at the owners, I mean, there's a, the Methodist Church owns some property here, um, TBA Credit Union owns some property there, but all that stuff backs up to the ridge, so it is not, um, it has not been developed to this point, and it does not look as if the opportunities for development in the future are as attractive there as they are in other parts of the zone, um, so that, that's one of the reasons we kind of stayed away from down here, is there's just not that many people, and I don't expect there to be that many people going forward. All right. So this is the proposed zone, um, so, uh, this is the, the, the same table we've looked at before, so it has the, um, the proposed, uh, the changes to the, the various schools, the, um, starting total for the new elementary school, I did want to highlight that the, um, the proposal that we have right now, um, suggests the, uh, grandfather transfer for all rising fifth graders, so none of these number, all of these numbers assume that nobody grandfathers, so, there are 100 students that would qualify to grandfather, those 100 students are not accounted for at any point in this, uh, in, uh, this table, uh, the logic behind that is essentially, um, if, you know, if your family gets rezoned, the decision whether you're going to access your grandfather transfer or not is going to be an individual family decision, um, I can't predict what people are going to do, nor do I want to, um, so those are, there is going to be a little bit of, you know, there's going to be some flexibility in these numbers because people do have autonomy in what they're going to do, and how they're going to do, and what their family situation is. All right, at this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Schafnocker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, we thought that it was very important to, um, kind of explain and paint a picture of what Hardin Valley looks like right now, and we keep saying it's overcrowded, but what does that currently look like and feel like as a student of Hardin Valley, so currently, um, starting at the top, this proposed zone, it creates the potential opportunity, um, for growth at all four of the schools, currently at Hardin Valley, you're looking at gaining four to five classrooms, and that's empty classrooms, um, and again, this is just for growth, um, at Karnes Elementary, seven to eight classrooms, Ball Camp, a possibility of one to two classrooms, and then, of course, at the new school, it's going to be able to accommodate, um, the additional 565 students, but what does that look like at Hardin Valley, we keep saying that it's overcrowded, um, so, before I go down this, um, laundry list of things that are going on in that building, um, I think it's important to note that there are seven learning cottages, um, also known as portables, um, located on this property, um, and this plan does not relieve those, those are, um, supposed to be temporary classrooms, and they are considered not so temporary because they do have to remain on property, um, so with those remaining at the site, um, they currently have three double classrooms, um, and those will return to a single classroom, and you're probably thinking, what's a double classroom, so a double classroom is basically, um, for instance, ones in the, um, what was considered a music room, it is, I would say, 40 to 50 students, I'm looking over at Lynn Jacobin just to verify, um, and it's two teachers, so that we are can, um, maintaining that BEP ratio, but you've basically got 40 to 50 students in one room with two teachers, so those classrooms would return to a single classroom, you also have four encore, encore teachers who are either on carts, or they've been displaced, so they don't currently have their own area, and so they need their own classrooms, also, uh, there were, the building was built with three workrooms, um, two of those, while I was there, we converted those two classrooms into a technology encore classroom, so those need to be reverted back to their original use, this also gives a classroom to, uh, ELL, um, and GT, and it also gives four additional classrooms, um, for onsite fed services, so that's a whole laundry list, but I do think it's important, and you can see in the fine print at the bottom of this, that this does not provide additional space for the SRO, the social worker, the psychologist, the counselors that are there, or the tutors, all of these people that I have just listed off, share a space, um, and so it's very hard for them to conduct business in a confidential manner, um, so those spaces don't require classrooms, but they certainly require offices or smaller areas within the building.
Okay.
Okay, um, so now, um, we were asked to look at some alternatives to the zone that was proposed, so, um, just at a very high level, and I'll go through this a little bit more detailed in a moment, but, uh, alternative one would be the removal of the Hayden Hills, um, subdivision for our development from the, um, new school zone, the second one would be the expansion of the grandfather clause, and the third would be an expansion of the proposed school zone for the new school. So, uh, alternative one, uh, removing Hayden Hills from the new school zone, so, um, what that would look like is we have 44 kids, uh, right now, in, uh, Hayden Hills that are attending Hardin Valley Elementary School, uh, that number could grow in future years as we've, we've talked about previously, the neighborhood is not quite done, it's, it's pretty close, but it's not quite done, um, one thing that is difficult when we're talking about, um, things at this granular of a level, um, is that, you know, we've referenced, um, our projections throughout this process, so the projections are meant to be a district level, a school level aid, um, so when you are looking at projections on the level of a neighborhood, it starts to break down, anybody that's familiar with statistics will tell you that a larger sample size is better than a smaller sample size, when you're looking at something, and, I mean, Hayden Hills is a sizable development, and, you know, there's 250-odd, um, individual plots in there, but 250, if you have one person that moves in with a large family, or one person that moves in with a small family, that creates a statistically significant difference in what you could see with the number of students that come out of there, so, the, the, the projections are still worthwhile, they're still worthy, they're still sound, but when you, they're, we're using them, to, to get to the number of Hayden Hills specifically, we're using them in a way that they're not designed to be used, um, having said all of that, um, we do project that Hayden Hills would probably stabilize, um, with between 45 and 50 elementary students, uh, coming out of that, that development in coming years, so, to contextualize that a little bit further, that's approximately 10% of the students that we were hoping, that we were proposing to zone out of Hardin Valley Elementary School, staying in Hardin Valley Elementary School, the other, the other part I feel incumbent upon me to mention is, i-if we, if we start making neighborhood-level decisions about school zones, we're setting a precedent for every time that we go through this process, about how we're going to approach this process. All right, so this is our same trustee enrollment chart, but with those numbers edited, so, uh, as you'll notice, the, the bright red parts, those are what is changing, so here we have more, fewer students coming out of Hardin Valley Elementary, fewer students going to, uh, the new elementary school, and the updated totals across the board. All right, um, alternative number two, um, was expanding the grandfather clause to include all currently enrolled younger siblings of rising fifth graders, so, um, the, the current proposal is only rising fifth graders would be able to grandfather, their siblings would not, so there are 100 rising fifth graders across the three affected schools, those 100 students have 39 younger siblings, um, so, again, trying to contextualize this a little bit more, um, that's 5% of the projected, roughly 5% of the projected opening enrollment of the new elementary school, um, one other thing that I think is important to know, um, that number of 39 younger siblings, that is 39 kids that are currently enrolled in Knox County Schools, so it does not include anyone, you know, under the age of five, for example, or who might attend a private school, parochial school, et cetera, um, we don't have a way of capturing that, um, so it's a, the, uh, this is everyone that we know about, this would be sort of what that looks like. And this is, again, our same trustee chart, um, but updated to, um, reflect the, um, the, I guess, adjusted populations, for lack of a better term, and you can see the breakdown here, um, there are four younger siblings at Ball Camp, 26 younger siblings at Hardin Valley Elementary, nine younger siblings of Karnes Elementary, for a total of 39, and of course, here would be the, the totals for the school at that point. All right, um, the third, um, alternative is actually an expansion of the proposed school zone, um, and the, I guess, the purpose of this is the fear that not enough students are coming out of Hardin Valley Elementary School to accommodate for the amount of growth that we're seeing in that sector of the county, um, so the idea behind this is, you know, we, we rezone more of those students to the new elementary school, and thus create more space at Hardin Valley Elementary, um, for that additional growth. Okay, so, there are not road names on here, so, to provide some context, this is Pellicippi Parkway, this is Level Road, this is Snyder Road, and this is Yarnell, this is Carmichael Road, leading up to Pellicippi, so, um, if anybody like landmarks, there's a gas station, like, I think it's a Weigels, it's right here, there's some apart, th-this is a big apartment complex, right there on the left as you're going up toward Pellicippi, so, the, I guess, the, the reason that this area, that, that we selected this area is, so this is an area that developed before the bulk of Hardin Valley did, um, so a lot of these homes have, were sold 10, 12 years ago, the neighborhoods in the, the area that, that I've highlighted here and read are mostly built out, there's some apartment complexes, but these are mature areas, for lack of a better term, I don't expect there to be a whole lot of development, I don't expect there to be a whole lot of additional growth, the, 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 the student yield that we will probably realize out of these areas is going to be relatively stable, so that's both good and bad, it does not help us in conversations about coming years, but it does provide immediately, immediate relief for Hardin Valley Elementary School, and again, creates additional seats for developments that may occur in other areas of their zone, uh, for the, for kids that come out of those to, to take that place, so, um, I mentioned, I, you know, keep coming back to the ridgeline, so the ridgeline comes right through here, Carmichael Road, right here, um, kind of runs in a shoulder of that ridgeline, so it's going, the high point is essentially here, and it's running downhill toward Level Road, so Carmichael kind of runs in the shoulder of that, there's an apartment complex here, I think it's the Icon at Hardin Valley, if memory serves, there's another apartment complex here, the name escapes me, we've not seen, those are fully finished, there's a, a third phase of the Icon that could go in this weird little, um, piece of land right there, uh, we're not seeing a ton of students coming out of there right now, there's four here and 13 here, um, so those numbers could increase a little bit, but we're not talking about they're going to build new buildings and all of a sudden we have 50 new kids, um, so, this is also, again, we're talking ridgelines, if that area develops, I guess, the economics of the situation, to my limited understanding, again, being the guy that does buses, it's cheaper to build on flatland than it is on, uh, the side of a hill, this is the side of a hill, so like, this may develop, but it's going to develop after other cheaper stuff has already developed, like, when the, the, the economics of the, of this situation dictate, maybe there, what, people would be willing to spend the extra money to put stuff here, but that's not something that I, that I personally think is going to happen, um, sooner, there, there are other areas that are more ripe for, um, development prior to that, um, so this is, it's essentially, this is an area that is sort of stable, um, and we can, um, you know, if, if our concern is getting more students out of Hardin Valley, this is an area where, where we can go and get a relatively stable number of students out of Hardin Valley, um, there, um, pardon me, right now, this, um, neighborhood down here, their distance to Hardin Valley Elementary, um, going this direction is about three and a half miles, so, this same neighborhood going to the new elementary school would be approximately four and a half miles, um, the main route of travel that I would anticipate for, um, people living down in this area in order to access the new elementary school, will be taking Snyder or Yarnell down to Level Road, turning left, pardon me, going underneath Pellicippi Parkway, turning left on Schaefer Road, um, they would then follow Schaefer, it parallels Pellicippi Parkway, um, up just past, um, Harrison Springs, Schaefer's actually been redone, like, there are sidewalks, and it's nice wide lanes, it's been realigned to come in to Cherahalla Boulevard right here at Hardin Valley Road, so people will come up this way, go to that stoplight, and then go across Hardin Valley Road in order to go up Cherahalla to Coward Mill and the new, uh, the new school, and that, that is a route of, of travel that, you know, buses could follow, cars could follow, I think it's the, the most logical way for, for people to, to proceed. Oh, I bet this is stuff that I just said, um, sorry, uh, yeah, it is, okay, so it, I guess the only other, the only other point that I should mention is that, that the other thing that, that this alternative does do, is it expands the, like, our conversations up to this point have been, you know, kind of all centered around one, uh, the, our yellow zone, that one area of town, that we are now expanding that footprint, and so we are talking about neighborhoods, families, students that have not previously been a part of this conversation now will be, um, so I think that is, that is worth, uh, worth consideration as well, and then, here's our table again, uh, illustrating what the enrollment of the, the various schools would look like, um, under alternative three, the biggest change, of course, is to Hardin Valley, um, so they would lose approximately 630 students, leaving them with 777, um, enrolled in August of '23, and we would open the new elementary school with 865 students. And now, I get to hand it off to Sunny again.
It's the last one, I promise, um, so, we basically are, are hoping that a decision can be made at the next board meeting, um, because if we can go ahead and agree on a zone, then we can move forward with several different things, however, if a decision is not made, um, it does impact and slow some things down, uh, to start the new school, so, for instance, we've got to name the new school, which I know that sounds, um, kind of, for lack of a better word, silly, but that name impacts almost everything, it impacts budgeting, um, it impacts getting a tax ID number where we can purchase things, there's lead time on different furniture pieces and equipment that we need to be ordering right now, and we can't do that until we get the name of the school and the tax ID number, um, also, we've got to select a mascot, and I would love to have, um, student input on this, um, and we can go ahead and, and get a mascot and a name for the school without zoning it, but I really think it's important to have that student input piece, and the parent input piece, um, and then this also impacts the staffing allocation, um, because those are already in the process of determining, um, basically for all schools, who needs to add teachers, who may need to downsize a little bit with teachers, and so, not only does it impact me and the new school, it impacts the other three schools, so it's impacting four schools' staffing allocations, and like I mentioned earlier, the budgeting piece, like, we the budgeting piece, like, we need to go ahead and start purchasing things, and we can't until this is completed. So, just begging for a decision to be made. Thank you.
And now, questions?
Alright, thank you, Dr. Adams, and Ms. Schaefer, and Mr. Dillingham. Do we have any questions, comments? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this presentation, I really appreciated being able to see where the students were located, because that helped me to see that what we're looking at, as far as where Pellicippi is, is really about the same, roughly, number of students going back and forth. So where we had these students going across to go to Harden Valley, we now have about the same number going the other direction. So that helps me to understand that quite a lot. Just as something to think about, I'd like us to consider, instead of playing with all of this different data that could change, it might be easier to grandfather the fifth graders like we've planned, keep the zone like we've planned, and then give all the current Harden Valley Elementary students first priority on transfer requests to stay there, and also first priority on transfer requests to go to the new school. So that might, might help to even that out a little bit, and then, once we got to capacity, that would just stop. So, that might be something, something to consider, instead of changing, changing all of the zones, and then, kind of hoping, if we gave them first priority on transfer requests, then we could grant those until space ran out, and that might, that might help with that. Do you know how many students currently are bused, or like, the percentage that either take a bus, or car riders?
And I don't know, you know, I haven't, we had this conversation, not a lot of students access transportation in that area. Percentage-wise, I don't have that percentage, but I know not a lot of students access transportation at all in that area.
So if we had more students who were accessing transportation, that would, that would take care of?
It would significantly reduce the amount of traffic on that, in that area.
Okay, thank you. And while I'm on that, I'd also like to throw a little plug out for, I'd really like to see us get rid of the PRZs, and allow busing for all of our students. Thank you.
Ms. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Adams, I wanted to ask a few questions about the third alternative. So, I do think we're going to have a challenge long-term in Harden Valley, if we only reduce the current population, I think the proposed new zone is reducing it by two-hundred kids, is that right? No, let's see, I got so many different tables here. Yeah, so the, so it's fourteen-hundred kids now, its capacity's twelve-hundred, but we're getting it down to somewhere around nine-hundred or something. And I think we're going to have challenges long-term with more development in that area, so I appreciate the third alternative. I'm, I'm curious what caused you all to bring that tonight, I think it ends up actually helping some, the long-term growth issues in Harden Valley, but I'm curious why you all, what caused you not to bring forth that proposal in the original? I'm just trying to get a sense of what was the...
Thank you, Mr. Watson, we, that was a request directly from the board.
Okay, so there was some board members you were asking for?
Yes, that is correct, I, so, so we're clear, we are proposing our first proposal.
Right.
The three alternative proposals that you see, were at a direct request from the board.
Okay, that's helpful, so, so you all, based on the projections that you all have, you all think that the first proposal addresses the longer-term concerns with potential development, and the expanded zone is not necessarily, it's not necessary in your all's minds, even for the long-term projections, is that fair to say?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one, one other question, I think I heard this before, that our grand, our precedent in terms around grandfathering is typically fifth grade or eighth grade, depending on the school, right, if it's a middle school zone, or if it's a elementary school zone. So our precedent has not been to grandfather in kids of those particular grade levels, right, which is alternative two here, that's not been our precedent in the past.
That is correct, the most recent grandfathering we have done with the new schools, that, the precedent was to have that terminal grade, and yes, to your point, no, not, not look at the siblings.
Yeah, and I, Mr. Dillingham, I appreciate you mentioning several times, I think whatever decision we do end up making, is, there's going to be precedent set for whatever the next decision is, right? And so I think we need to make sure that whatever decision that we make, that we take that into account. And I also think that provides more consistency to the community as a whole, that they kind of get a sense of what those precedents are going into it. Anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, do we have any other questions? Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question about Ms. Owen's thought about the transfer, I would assume that there may not be very many spots for a transfer, because this school is essentially still going to be at capacity, even if we rezone all these students. So, is it correct, am I thinking about it correctly, that if we had a third grader that wanted to transfer into that school, it would only be if you happened to have nineteen kids in a twenty classroom space? Is that correct? Because we're essentially still going to be at capacity, would we not?
That's a great question, and then you get into the grade level conversation, when you have some classes that are just larger than others, so the building level principal would then have to take in consideration that grade level, and it may be that the school can hold additional students, but that particular grade level, they cannot, because they're already at capacity for that particular grade. And so that, so you get into the classes, and some classes are larger than others.
It would just be a very specific situation at that point, but, but I, I just, I guess I don't want to offer false hope that there could be opportunity for transfer, because there may not be.
That is correct, and that's why, you know, it, every transfer, regardless who applies or gets a preference, it's on an individual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so, I know it wasn't drawn that way on the map, but I want to make sure that I'm right, if we do alternative one and remove Hayden Hills, you're basically creating a donut in the zone, correct? So there'd be a, kind of an empty spot in, in the zone, that the zone would wrap around that particular neighborhood, is that correct?
Yes. So, yeah, so this is Hayden Hills, right here, and so, if we just remove Hayden Hills, you'll have the south side of Samley Road that will stay in Harden Valley, the north side of Samley Road will go to the new elementary school. So, it will, yeah, it'll create a, I call it a bulge.
Okay, a bulge. Thank you, I appreciate the description. And then, the alternative three really creates something you said that the, in historically, we've tried to fight against, which is kind of finger zoning, right? That that alternative three is kind of like this, just kind of random jut-off off the side, that, I know, I've, I've seen that in the past, and typically, families who live long-term in those finger zones don't appreciate being in the finger zones, from what I've seen, but, anyway, thank you.
And, Mr. Watson, to your point, this is probably one of the cleanest rezonings I have seen, to where you're not cutting across a street, so it, when you look at it on a map, it makes sense, you're not cutting into neighborhoods, basically.
I just had some comments, I just want to thank you for taking the time during this workshop to present these ideas. I know we heard from a lot of, a lot of folks in the Harden Valley community, so thank you for, you know, listening to us, listening to their voices, and I want to, I appreciate Ms. Owen coming up with that plan, I think, I, I think it's a good idea, I think it gives people some choice that are asking for choice, so I appreciate you, Ms. Owen, and coming up with that idea as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
Yeah, and I would just like to add, with, with the growth in this area, I'm assuming that at some point, you know, we might have to come back and revisit zoning again, eventually. So I, just to note, because I think we've heard a lot of people say, I bought my home thinking I would go to this school or that school, and with so much growth in this area, we, we can't really guarantee that in the future. You know, we're seeing the effects of it on Harden Valley Elementary right now, so I just do want to note that, it's like, nobody feels good about, you know, rezoning, but, you know, and they are hard, hard decisions, and I do appreciate the work, and I definitely like your suggestion as well, Ms. Owen. But just, just to note that we might have to revisit this, and if you're in that area buying a house, thinking you're going to a certain school, that might not always be the case, so. Ms. Horn?
Thank you. Ms. Owen, can I ask a clarifying question? Was your intent that if a student asks for a transfer, that they would be given priority over a student that did not live in that, that zip code?
Yes. I was thinking that might give us a little more, a little more control of the number of students than just blanket grandfathering.
And then they would also have a higher opportunity versus somebody that lives in South Knoxville, or whatever?
Right.
Also, okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In reference to what you were, the comments you made, and also, comment that Mr. Watson made about establishing precedent, I do think the area will continue to grow, and we will probably have to look at it again. However, in establishing precedent, once we establish a zone, that, that doesn't mean that it's fixed in stone, because some of us will not be here, maybe in the future, when, when that was created, and, I mean, when it would come up, rather, but, anytime you have a majority of the board, they can restructure, however they choose to do so, if they have the votes. Just, I just wanted to point that out, it may be unlikely, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, one other clarifying question, how long would you intend that that preference be in existence? Is that just this next calendar year when the school opens? Is it ongoing? What's your thought about that?
Since it would be based on transfer rather than grandfathering, I would think it could, it could be for all the students who are currently there, as long as there's, I mean, it's, it's all space-dependent, so...
I guess what I'm asking is, if somebody, let's say, five years from now, says, hey, I want to, all of a sudden, I want to transfer there, would they still get the same precedence because they were in that?
The same first priority?
Yeah.
I would say not based on zip code, I would say based on students who are there right now.
Right, okay. So the priority based on zip code would be shorter-lived?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And I might add, just, just for fun, that, that I went through something similar to this when I was in fifth grade, but they sent us back to, they moved us because one school was overcrowded, they built on, and then sent us back, in the middle of our fifth grade year. I barely remember it, I turned out mostly okay.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. So do we have any other discussion, comments, questions? Okay, so thank you, Dr. Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, executive board, we appreciate your time.
So, Ms. Henderson, we have public forum?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we do have three public forum speakers tonight, first we have Mr. Timothy Buss. Mr. Timothy Buss?
Hi.
Hello, sir.
Hi. Since I have some questions, I want to check your phone, I'll come back in the next, next week.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Next we have Mr. Nathaniel Powell, if you want to come up and just state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, thank you for your time this afternoon, this evening, so I represent the Greenbrook HOA, we sent in a petition with over a hundred and fifty signatures, numerous letters, and also been in contact with other neighborhoods in the western side of the Harden Valley affected area. So we've been a little bit disappointed with this whole process, we thought it would be more interactive to start with, it doesn't seem like there was a lot of input from the community that was taken into this. The other thing that was told to us is that, and I don't really understand why this is the case, is that the schools do not interact with the highway department in planning these types of decisions. That's kind of, I don't really understand why we're not using all these resources together. So, based on what our conversations have been with the other neighborhoods, we recommend at this point, this, that you do not adopt the current proposal, based on the fact that we've never been explained how we're supposed to get there in the mornings. There's a choke point underneath Harden, the Pellicippi Parkway, at Old Sawway and Harden Valley, where everybody from that side is going to have to turn left, there's no other way to get there, and that already is backed up in the mornings before we do this, and none of those people go that way right now. So, as it is right now, none of us are sure how we're going to get there in the mornings. The reason no one uses the transportation in the morning is because of the time of pickup, nobody's kids want to be out there before seven forty, I mean, six forty. This will just be even worse, because the drive time will obviously be longer. So, at this point, we're asking that you don't accept that proposal, the other thing that I've heard from all of these neighborhoods that I've been talking with, is the special attention to one neighborhood, that neighborhood actually happens to be the closest to the new school as well, so they would actually have the shortest drive as well. So we would also ask that you don't give any special consideration to any neighborhood, all the other neighborhoods have their reasons why they chose to live where they are, they like the schools they're in, they have all the same reasons, and so that's what I'd like you to consider, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ms. Whitney Miller. Whitney Miller? Oh, did she leave? Oh, okay. That concludes public forum, Madam Chair.
So, moving on to board forum, Ms. Deckard, Ms. Owen, Mr. Watson, Ms. Henderson, Ms. Pike, Ms. Horn, Mr. Triplett, Mr. McMillan. Alright, so with that, meeting is adjourned.